Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call the meeting to order if you could all stand. I'd like to ask Counselor Inonie to lead us in prayer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If everybody can bow their heads and join me in the Lord's Prayer. Our Father who art in heaven.
Allo, benedictum. Our kingdom come. Thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread. And forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not to temptation, but deliver us from evil. Mine is the kingdom, the power and the glory, forever and ever. Amen.
The first order of business on the agenda is the adoption of the council minutes of November 10th. Moved by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Maves. Any further discussion or comment? Having seen none, all those in favor, motions carried. And also then, the next order is the approval of the council minutes of November 17th. Moved by Counselor Peter Angelo, seconded by Counselor Maves. Once again, you heard the questions. Any comments? Having seen none, all those in favor, motions carried. Thank you very much. This time, I'm going to ask for a disclosure of any pecuniary interest by any members of council. Counselor Inonie.
Check 323711 made out to myself.
Thank you. So noted. Counselor Peter, sorry, Counselor Diardati.
Your worship, check number 323712 written to myself.
Thank you. Counselor Peter Angelo.
Thank you, your worship. 323714. It's a reimbursement for mileage to AMO.
Okay, thank you. So noted. Counselor Maves.
Check 32713 payable to me. AMO conference.
Thank you. So noted. Counselor Thompson.
Yes, PD 2008-112, conflict and also bylaw 2008-207.
So noted. Counselor Wing.
Bylaw 2008-207. My spouse has a business relationship with the owner.
Thank you. So noted. And I'd like to disclose that checks number 323546 and check number 323715 are payable to myself as well. At this time, ladies and gentlemen, we have a deputation. Mrs. Jana Katz, owner of the Niagara Falls McDonald's, on behalf of Ronald McDonald Charities, will be presenting a check to the Niagara Falls Lions Club for the parks redevelopment project that we have seen on Drummond Road. I'd like to welcome all of you to council this evening and thank Mrs. Katz for being here. We have representatives from the Lions Club, I believe, where Jerry Boudreau and Don Wallace as well. So who'd like to lead the way? Nancy, would you like to come forward as well?
I'd like to be.
Okay. Do you want to just have a chance to speak at the microphone first? And then we'll have the presentation.
On behalf of the McDonald's Charities, I would also like to introduce Jana Katz, who is the owner, and she's representing actually her family. This is a donation to redevelopment of the park.
Jana, do you want to make a comment first?
I just want to present a check.
Okay, thank you. All right. Good. That's okay. That's great.
On behalf of Ronald McDonald House charities, we'd like to present this check for $25,000 to the Lions Club for their accessible playground.
On behalf of the Niagara Falls Lions Club, I would like to thank Katz and I for this generous donation towards their park.
And on behalf of the members of council, ladies and gentlemen, I'm very pleased to thank both the representatives from the Niagara Falls Lions Club for their commitment to this project with us, a community project as well, as a support of McDonald's. And this certainly valued funds and revenues to this project. It makes a big difference in the redevelopment of Lions Park and some of the neighborhood is really anxious to see. So thank you for your commitment, both the organizations to our city, for making Niagara Falls a better place. Thank you so much.
Thank you. The community has asked me to make sure that you all know that Ronald McDonald House charities really gets this money from customers. 10 cents from every Happy Meal purchase actually comes back into the community. So this is just a perfect example of how all of, everybody who is going to McDonald's and buying Happy Meal, how this is coming back to the community. The city started in 2004, and we'd raised over $20 million to help Ronald McDonald House charities. A half a million in just Niagara, if you were to.
Well, we appreciate the fact and beneficiaries of some of those funds. Thank you for your commitment. Thank you.
On behalf of the Niagara Falls Lions Club, I would like to present the city with a certificate of appreciation for all the work they have done for us in obtaining our grant, $49,000, $75,000, and of course, the $25,000 received from McDonald's today.
Thank you.
And I hope to continue to use their good offices in the future more brands.
Thank you very much. I accept this on behalf of the members of council, also for our Parks and Rec staff who worked along with you on this redevelopment project. And we're very excited to see the results of this project when it appears to come to be a reality. So thank you so much. Appreciate it, gentlemen. Thank you.
Thank you, members of council. We have some planning matters to deal with this evening, but I'd like to ask our city solicitor to deal with the matter with regard to ownership issue before we begin the process of the public meeting. So Mr. Beeman, could you just elaborate, please, on the matter of the first item?
Well, this particular property has been, is the subject of a power of sale proceeding at the moment, which as of last Thursday had not been resolved. As well, the current owner has presented the city with an agreement of purchase and sale and claimed that he was going to be selling the property yesterday. We haven't seen evidence that the sale actually got completed. And I haven't heard, Mr. Bill Walker of Gallings was on for home trust on the power of sale, and I haven't heard from him to say that he's satisfied with the situation. So that, given that uncertainty, it would be my recommendation that council defer the matter until that sort of thing is resolved as well. I'd like to point out there is also a heritage issue on this property, which has been raised by the Heritage Committee. I don't believe council has had.
...for timely digestive information, or we get proper recommendations from planning staff on the recent report of the Heritage Committee. And I would also suggest that the council property discharge its function of the industry would be wise to spend more time to consider both those issues before making the final decision on the property.
Certainly. We appreciate your advice, Mr. Beeman. Thank you very much. We have a motion before us. Counselor Inonie, seconded by Counselor Carrio. Any further discussion by members of council?
Where is the question?
The motion is to defer, if you like. Well, it's actually defer a motion, so do you want to ask a question of the?
I'll draw my.
Okay. Thank you. If you would, yes, perhaps you'd like to ask our solicitor further information so you can make that decision.
Sorry, did he already say when it was coming back?
No, I don't think he did. Mr. Beeman, would you have any idea when it comes back?
Well, I would actually be applying department matter, Counselor, President Counselor Angelo, through the chair. But I don't know. Mr. Boliver, would you have any suggestion as to when that, we could expect this back?
I believe we can probably deal with that in January 26th meeting. The property sale is to close, I think, December 30th. So that, given that, we will have, you do have in your package that was released tonight, the memo from the Heritage Committee. So conceivably, we could deal with that January 26th. We would reavertize and notice this would be sent out.
Counselor Peter Angelo, just a few minutes.
On the first, January 26th.
Okay, well, we just may have more questions. Counselor, does that answer your question?
Yes, your worship. And then I'm just wondering actually if there's a sign up sheet outside, because I know a lot of times the residents do come out, but then they're sent home. So, I mean, if it should in fact happen again, that January 26th is deferred, perhaps we can then notify them.
Certainly, anybody interested in this property, and the property we're referring to is one at 6320 Pine Grove Avenue in Niagara Falls, please assign the sign in sheets, if you haven't already done so, on your way out, if you're here on that matter. So we do then have a motion to entertain. So Counselor Inonie, do you want to be qualifying your motion again, please? I'm sorry, Mr. Clerk?
We would try to obviously go for January 26th if the property issues are resolved. If they're not.
Sure.
You know, we'd be in the same predicament we're in tonight.
Exactly.
But, you know, if resolved, then yes, we would try to bring it for the 26th.
Want it to read that way? Okay. So we have a second or Counselor Carrio? Fine. Any discussion? No, you can't, no discussion. I'm sorry, we already, it's a motion to defer.
We've all dropped.
Yeah. Do you have another question on legal matter?
Yes, I do. And I'm trying to get a handle on when we're going to deal with the Heritage Committee's recommendation. Would that be on January 26th, or do we want to proceed with it at this point so we can?
Okay, let's see if we can get that question answered. Mr. Boliver, you have any comments with regard to the heritage designation of this property?
Yes, that's probably a matter we would like to deal with tonight, because it gives us an opportunity for, if council does consider it to be a listed property or heritage property, that we could carry out the research we need to do. And it also allows that the owner do not, we give him notification, and therefore we will protect the building and give them all.
So are you suggesting we can still deal with that this evening, just after this, these comments of this motion? Okay, thank you. So we have Counselor Inonie, are you prepared to make that motion again?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a second to the motion? Counselor Carrio?
Yes, any other questions? Second.
Okay, Counselor Carrio, seconds of motion. We have a motion now to defer this to January 26th if the property matter is resolved. Okay? No comments at this point. All those in favor? Motion's carried and asked to be fine. Yes, now Counselor Wing?
Okay. And I will move the municipal Heritage Committee recommendation that council issue a notice of intention to designate the property known as 6320 Pine Grove Avenue due to its cultural heritage value and interest to the city of Niagara Falls. That will permit us to get the research done before January 26th, hopefully.
Okay, is there a second to Counselor Wing's motion? Counselor Inonie? Is there any discussion to the motion? Having seen none, I'm not sure if we're allowing a public input. Is there somebody that wants to make a presentation? Do you have a request, sir? Sorry, Mr. Beeman?
Mr. Mayor, we haven't opened the public meeting.
Yes.
So I would not recommend that we take comments from the general public.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Clerk, can we open the meeting, or can we take a vote first? What'd you advise?
Well, you're not opening the planning meeting. You're talking about the designation of the property.
Okay.
I mean, I assume that the gentleman in the corner is the gentleman who, Mr. Ogilvy, and maybe he wants to comment. I think it's only fair you allow him to comment, but not. Open it up to the general gallery for comments.
Okay, thank you. So we do have a motion on the floor. We'll deal with that now with regard to the designation, so.
Well, why don't you listen to him first? It might change your opinion on the motion.
Okay, can we open the public meeting then with respect to this?
Not doing the public meeting. You're asking the owner of the property, if council makes a motion, to hear the owner of the property. Do that, and then deal with the motion on the designation of the property.
Okay, so we have that before the members of council. All those in favor? Motion's carried. Thank you very much. Sir, please come forward. Is that correct? Nope, did I miss it?
Well, you didn't have a moment or a second to let him speak.
Okay, motion to allow the speaker. Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Fisher. All those in favor to allow the gentleman to speak? Fine, sir, would you be kind enough to identify yourself and give us your address, please?
Mr. Mayor, council members, my name is Gordon Ogilvy. My address is 6320 Pine Grove Avenue, and I am the applicant for this matter. I have heard comments a few seconds ago regarding the documentation to, can I quote, defer until the ownership and inheritance matters outlined in this report have been addressed.
I would like to address the first issue specifically. The first issue being, staff have recently been informed that there are title disputes affecting the property. The current registered owners of the property have entered in an agreement of purchase and sale dated October 8, 208, to transfer ownership of the lands to 1650703 Ontario Limited. The closing date of sales is December 30th, 2008. One of the mortgagees of the property, Home Trust Company, has declared the mortgage in default, taken control of the property, and placed the property under power of sale. The planning department prerequisite to apply for a rezoning amendment is that you own the property in question. We fulfilled and are fulfilling our rights as residents and taxpayers in this community to pursue this development. The title held in ownership of the property is crystal clear. Home Trust is irrelevant to this development application. I don't see the relevancy for a council to debate a mortgage issue on a development proposal. Mr. Mayor. If I may continue, it is not uncommon for an individual to sell to an Ontario Limited numbered company a property for construction and development purposes. It is also not uncommon to pay out or redeem their mortgage legally up until the last minute. I reiterate, I don't see the relevance of a mortgage debate in council chambers regarding this issue. Number two, I will address the second specific issue. Municipal Heritage Committee. The quote is, letters have been received. I received a copy of one letter from the planning department relating to the municipal Heritage Committee. I sat in a meeting on Thursday and was informed of certain ideas that may be brought up so that this property could be designated historical or of heritage value. There is no design value of the property that is not abnormal. The physical value of the property is the same as all the other nice houses built in the 1930s. It is not unique. The high degree of craftsmanship is non-existent. This property is not a neighborhood landmark. Association does not make it historical. We understand the issues of certain prominent business community leaders living in the property from time to time, but once again, we do not feel, this does not give merit to designate this property historical or of heritage value. Without going further on, I've addressed these two specific points. And I have a question. The question I have is, upon if there has been an inspection of the internal aspects of the mentioned property, did that occur? Was there an inspection of the internal of the property from the municipal Heritage Committee?
Okay. Is that one question? Do you have anything else, sir?
I have a lot more, yes.
Okay, let's see if we can get that answer for you. Mr. Boliver, can you address that, please?
Not to my knowledge, there was no internal inspection.
Okay. Yes, Counselor Wing?
Just a comment. The municipal Heritage Committee generally doesn't designate interior features. I think there was only one case in the city in which it's happened, and that was St. Paul's Church. So it's the exterior that the committee is concerned with.
I have another question on the same issue. Has the research that was mentioned been done by the municipal Heritage Committee? Or are we requiring and requesting time to do so?
Mr. Boliver?
There has, Mr. Mayor. There has been some research carried out, and we would endeavor to do additional research.
May I also, the research you're carrying up is based on, on what?
Again, once again, Mr. Boliver?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. They are guided by the Heritage Act. There are certain features, or there's a whole list of criteria that they would carry out the research and look at it early. I think at the end of the day, they would make a determination as to whether or not it is in fact of heritage value. We know it's Tudor revival style. It's kind of unique. It does have certainly some unique features to it. To say that it is definitely a heritage building right now, I don't think we can say that. We need to do some additional research.
Thank you.
If I may continue on the same subject, Mr. Mayor. It is quoted in the documentation given to yourself and to council that letters have been received regarding possible heritage significance. What letters are these? And where are the copies of these letters? I have not received anything.
And once again, Mr. Boliver?
Mr. Mayor, we did receive comments from a couple individuals that reside in the area. They are from Cheryl Pett and Kenneth Kenzel, and also Ralph and Kerry Barbieri. If Mr. Ogilvy did not get a copy of those, it's unfortunate, but we can certainly provide those to him.
I have, excuse, I have copies of both letters. One letter, not letters, refers to any heritage association. The letter from Ms. Cheryl Pett and Mr. Kenneth Kenzel has no referral whatsoever to heritage. The letter here only stipulates from a neighbor living directly across the street, next to the apartment building across the street, submitted this letter, and outlines all the supposed reasons why this property should be possibly designated heritage and or historical in a letter from one of the neighbors. Secondary, if I may continue. In the very beginning, when we came to the planning authority, we were summoned to a meeting on October 6th. That meeting was held regarding this project. In the meeting were the two architects, Mr. Lezdal, Mr. Obonacar. There was Mr. Bryce from the planning department, Mr. Mech, or Mesh, I'm sorry about the pronunciation, from the planning department, and myself. At this meeting, we were informed, changes to our proposal were required to satisfy the planning department. When these changes were made and resubmitted, we were told we would have the recommendation for this project from the planning department to council. Our architects did all the work immediately and resubmitted the documentation. The size of the building was decreased. 18 units were suggested for us to develop over the level of three floors. The large mature trees were included in a development and will remain. We discussed other little issues. Garbage pickup area was redefined, how the truck's going to come in, how he's going to get the garbage, how he's going to back out, how he's not going to bother the neighbors, et cetera, et cetera. Then, completing these requests, this recommendation would be given for all the right development reasons. The project, to clarify, to all the neighbors sitting here today, I think that when the signs of potential development were posted on the property, everyone will probably agree, they are a little slight bit misleading. They state apartment building. Those are the exact words there. Our project will be 18 units over three floors. Full underground parking facility is available. Almost 49% of the development will be landscaped gardens. 49%. That's half, Mr. Mayor, of the whole piece of the property.
Excuse me, a second. Counselor Inonie?
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, just, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Did we, this is the planning issue. Did we not defer this?
You're correct. And I would just, I was.
I just, I just want to be clear to know what we did here, because we're now into what Mr. Beeman asked us not to do. So did we not defer this planning issue?
And actually, I was going to suggest, sir, you're talking about planning issues, and we're talking about the heritage matter right now. So, you know, really, the technical points will be coming forward at a proper planning meeting. But we'll be glad to hear your comments and your arguments at that time. But if you have any other issues with respect to the heritage aspect, and I wanted to question where you're going, do you have any other questions with respect to heritage?
Okay, so how did I miss being able to have my opportunity to speak? And how did we get to defer without my intervention in the meeting?
Well, as you heard, we're not dealing with this as a planning matter, and it'll have an opportunity to be presented once the ownership issue is clarified.
I understand it, but I thought I just clarified that, sir.
No, no, we haven't had that yet, and I think we're going to ask for some evidence from our solicitor. Mr. Beeman?
Okay. Can I ask you a question, sir, if I may?
Yes, but just let him respond, please. Sorry, Mr. Beeman?
I don't know exactly what you're looking at, Mr. Mayor. We'll have to wait for this to inform itself.
The gentleman was asking when we are in a position to deal with a planning matter, and I guess once we see.
We have a January 26th, as council's already.
And if we see evidence of the matter with regard to title being cleared up.
Yeah, that's the title straightened up at that time. It would be my intention to report to council the state of the title, as I see it at that time, it may be. So it's almost tricky. It's just never a good idea to go ahead with these old problems, people who's in charge of it.
We've already agreed, sure.
To get an appeal for just because, to turn it back.
We've already agreed to that. So, Mr. Boliver, do you have a comment you'd like to make?
Yes, the real issue here is the heritage value of the property. At last week's Heritage Committee, prior to that, we, Andrew Bryce of our department had verbally asked Mr. Ogilvy, or offered him to come to that meeting. What we had chatted about possibly last week is, at the next Heritage Committee meeting, maybe the Heritage Committee could listen to Mr. Ogilvy's arguments and reconsider. It would allow us to do the research we need to do, and Heritage Committee may reconsider or confirm their current motion. But again, we should let that play itself out. And I think, hopefully, January 26th, we would have the answers both on the title and also the heritage issue.
Okay, thank you. Now, I have questions from Counselor Wing, Counselor Inonie, and Counselor Thompson.
Actually, some clarification. I think perhaps a reference to letters might have also referred to an email from myself. I emailed the planning staff after I was contacted by an area resident about the application. And I asked in my email that this matter be placed on the municipal Heritage Committee agenda, because we are in the process of going through the municipal heritage register, ranking in terms of priority properties that are on it. We're actually deleting some from the register, and as we're going along, we're suggesting that others be added. So it's in a bit of a flux, and I said, listen, here's another one that's come up. We really need to take a look at it. And in the meantime, I did a little preliminary research for the committee and presented my findings, and staff presented theirs, and we are guided by the Ontario Heritage Act, and there is provincial criteria we have to follow for determining cultural heritage value or interest under the municipal Heritage Act. It's outlined in the handout tonight that the Heritage Act considers property appropriate for designation if it meets one or more of the following criteria. It met all of them. So the municipal Heritage Committee voted unanimously to send this recommendation to council, and Mr. Ogilvy was listed on our agenda as a deputation, but he didn't show up, so we went ahead, because I'm sure whether or not we heard from him, the facts stand, they speak for themselves, that it meets all the criteria, but we would like to do further investigation.
Thank you very much. Counselor, sorry, Counselor Inonie and Counselor Thompson.
And the reason I stepped up and asked, Mr. Mayor, is because I was just handed a copy of the petition from the residents, and I didn't want them to think we weren't dealing with their petition, and I didn't want you to continue to think that we can't vote on something that we've already deferred. So I'd like to give this to the clerk so that it can come back January 26th, so the residents know that we have it. But I think we're mixing our topics here.
Exactly. We're talking about heritage issues, sir. I think you know that. So we've decided not to deal with the planning matter as you were talking about the planning issue. So please understand that. Okay, good. Counselor Thompson? Okay, so at this point, sir, we have considered your comments with regard to the heritage designation. Council has a motion before to deal with it. Is there anything else you'd like to say with regard to the heritage aspect?
No, there is not, but I would like to reiterate the first issue, the Home Trust, who owns the property issue. Can I ask Mr. Beeman a question, please?
Perhaps. I lull the question, but we're still talking about heritage issues. I think you should really pass on that and have Mr. Beeman deal with that tomorrow. But I think that's a matter, he's got to come back to this council and satisfy us with respect to the fact that there's no title dispute before we'll deal with this matter. And so that was very clear of council. So I really would direct you to talk to him a little later, off to the side, if you would. But if you have anything else with regard to heritage, we'll entertain that now. Is there anything further?
That's fine.
Okay, thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, council members.
Pleasure of council. Okay, Mr. Clerk? We have a motion on the floor. Mr. Clerk, do you just want to clarify that, please, for everybody's benefit?
The council issued a notice of intention to designate for the property known as 6320 Pine Grove Avenue due to its cultural heritage value and interest to the city of Niagara Falls.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion by members of council with regard to the motion? Counsel Thompson?
Yes, can we have an explanation of what that means?
Okay, yes, Mr. Bolbrook, could you qualify exactly the process? That's a good question, so that the members of the public are aware of what will happen from this point, if what the action of the council is determined from here?
I'm not a hundred percent sure on my Heritage Act explanation. Dean, were you going to?
Clerk?
I'm ninety percent sure. Here's what happens, there's an ad in the paper with the intent to designate, and there is an opportunity for appeals to that. So Mr. Ogilvy, for example, could appeal the notice of intent to designate, and sometimes that process could be quite long, as the All Saints Church process that we just recently went through, but it is a process that allows appeals to the intention to designate, and that especially always happens when a property owner sort of unwittingly is in the situation where their property, you know, is being possibly designated. You recall the Loretto example, where people in the community wanted Loretto designated, but the nuns didn't want that to happen, and of course, the All Saints situation, where in that case, the parishioners wanted designation, but the diocese didn't. So there's always an opportunity to appeal these things, and ultimately, they could go to the, what's called the Ontario Conservation Review Board, but hopefully, usually, there's an attempt to try to mediate that before it gets to that point in time. So notice of intent to designate doesn't mean designation is necessarily going to happen, so Mr. Ogilvy, you should be apprised of that.
Okay, so members of council, is that clear to everybody? Is there any further questions of members of staff? Okay, having seen none, we'll call the vote. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. It's unanimous. Thank you very much, members of council. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen, appreciate your time here this evening. Keep you posted. Clerk, could you introduce the next item on the agenda, please?
A public meeting is now being convened to consider a proposed amendment to the city's zoning bylaw to permit some site works related to erosion control and slope stability. The number of addresses indicated on the agenda on Catherine Crescent. Notice was given by first-class mail in accordance with the Planning Act on Friday, November 7th, 2008, and by posting a sign on the property in question. Anyone who wants notice of the passage of the zoning bylaw amendment, or preserve their opportunity to appeal to the Ontario Municipal Board, shall leave their name on the sign-in sheets outside the council chamber.
Thank you very much, Mr. Clerk. At this time, I'm going to ask Mr. Bolbrook from our planning department to explain the purpose, the reason for the proposed bylaw amendment. Mr. Bolbrook?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and Mr. Chiaofo. We have the applicant here this evening. We are dealing with a proposal that would permit site works related to the erosion control and slope stability of the property. Here you see a picture of the applicant's house. So we're in the rear of the property, and we are standing in the environmental protection area. Here gives a little better description of the properties. The center property is the applicant. To the south is a property that is currently developed, and a vacant block to the door. That is Catherine Avenue there. We're in Palo Gero Estates. If you, I guess, well, this is kind of the base or bottom of the area, and Rock Cliff is kind of the top of the slope. You can see here by the hatched area, which is called or referenced as EPA area, it is currently 552 zone land, which does not permit any works to be done, other than for municipal
This is a view of the embankment within the EPA area. Actually, we are looking north, northwest again, so you can see the embankment there. So very briefly, the background, we've got the applicants who have requested zoning bylaw amendment to allow the works to be constructed. The front of the property is owned residential, single-family. The applicants undertook the site works to stabilize the slope, and now have requested, basically, that zoning bylaw amendment considered to be recognizing that fact. All the work is going to be subject to a permit with the Conservation Authority, and we've suggested it be extended on both properties, and that's why the city's a co-applicant, so it would allow those property owners to also do remedial work to stabilize that bank. Quickly, the official plan designates the property as residential, permits this type of work that's being recognized. The zoning does contain some special provisions to prohibit any work, and now, through this amendment, we would allow that to happen, subject to permit by the Niagara Peninsula Conservation Authority. There has been a study carried out by the applicant. The recommendation by his engineer is that they carry out a three-to-one grade to minimize any slumpage, and also possibly securing the area with some armor stone. If it's approved, there will be an application required that would, the work would have to be in accordance with that study that was carried out, as well as the application through the Conservation Authority. Just in conclusion, the zoning amendment to permit the works can be supported, and our recommendation is that the zoning bylaw amendment, before you be approved.
Okay, thank you. Counsel Wing, you have a question?
Yes, as Mr. Bolbrook just stated, and it says in our report currently, the special provision applying to the land prohibits any work activity or buildings on the land, and yet we have a correspondence from a neighbor saying that there was quite a bit of disturbance that took place at the property when it was being developed, including work within the EPA area. The work involved removal of many trees and regrading of the property, and suggests that this regrading has caused some of the erosion problems that are now occurring, in addition to partially replacing a beautiful natural area with a manicured lawn. So I trust what we're seeing is the part of the EPA area then has been turned into lawn. If that was prohibited, why did it happen, and what's being done because work took place that was prohibited from taking place?
Mr. Bolbrook, can you answer those questions at all?
Well, the applicant is here, he can answer them. If you're asking me, did he go in there and disturb the property? Yes, he did. Probably in not understanding what the environmental protection area is meant for. You can see to the right is natural vegetation, and obviously, to the center and left is his, and it is manicured. I think the important point is that we want to ensure the stabilization of the bank. There are other landowners that have graded the back of their property, probably should have had the city involved sooner. It's difficult to catch people doing that, and I think we don't know who called on the applicant in this case, but we're trying to, I guess, resolve an issue that at least we'd have stabilized slope. So maybe the applicant.
Perhaps we can get that question answered in a moment when we ask him to speak. Is there anything else, Counsel Wing?
Yeah, I'm just wondering, like, are these special provisions utterly toothless? Like, do they not have any kind of provisions if they're disregarded? You know, because if we're putting on special provisions to protect natural areas, areas that are supposed to be environmentally protected, and people just totally disregard those, are there any kind of repercussions, or is it just totally meaningless?
Got a question just now? Mr. Bolbrook, could you attempt to answer that question, please?
I think we try our best efforts. You're right, the land should be protected, there shouldn't be any earthworks done in there, but it's difficult to keep on top of that. We try our best from an education perspective. Maybe in retrospect, the owner wouldn't have done that if he had known, but it's a difficult thing to control.
The reason I'm concerned, Your Worship, is that there have been so many applications that have come through in the decade, and well, actually, more than a decade now I've been on council, and they have EPA lands as part of the application, and we're assured that these lands will be protected under these special provisions. And so when you hear that, sometimes those provisions are ignored, and those lands that we set aside to be protected aren't being protected, you know, it makes me very concerned about all the other applications that have come through and are continuing to come through. You know, are we losing a riparian habitat that we heard downstairs today is meant to be protected, needs to be protected, to preserve the quality of our water?
Certainly, and we're dealing with it now, as you know, so that's a very appropriate point. Thank you very much. Any other comments from members of council? Okay, then, members of the public are advised that failure to make an oral written submission at this public meeting will result in the Ontario Municipal Board dismissing any referral it receives. Failure to sign the sign-in sheets will result in staff rejecting an appeal, as per section 34, subsection 19 of the Act, of the Planning Act, I should say. At this time, council will hear from anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak to the proposed bylaw amendment. Is there anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak? Are you other than the applicant, sir? Yes, please come forward.
I just have a question, this was brought.
Kind of identify yourself, please, your name.
Sorry, my name is Peter Chagoun. I'm the property owner to the, above his property, 2096 is my.
Thank you.
The question I have is, you know, I understand what the applicant is trying to do, but I'd like to know how it will affect my property. And a comment that was made was that there may be works that the adjacent properties may have to perform in order to fit in with what work is being done on the said property, and I'd like to know what type of work are we looking at, and what exposure do I have?
Mr. Bolbrook, can you address that?
Yes, one of the requirements we have talked about is the grading plan. That's approved as part of the subdivision development. We would have to ensure through the building department or engineering that that's not affected, because obviously, you can't affect your neighbors and their, and any runoff that affects, that comes from you cannot affect adversely your neighbor. So that's one step that we've asked that the applicant to ensure that the grading plan is in conformance.
So I understand what you're saying, and I'm just not fully understanding how, you know, it'll ultimately impact my property when the time comes for me to put a dwelling on there.
Oh, okay, so you're the applicant of the.
Next door.
I noticed that you're quite a bit lower in, there's probably a six-foot drop to that this individual's property. That would likely have to be regraded, obviously, and the clearance, I think, comes from the engineering department on the grades. So the property you're talking about is this one here?
Correct.
That's currently vacant, and there is a substantial slope right along the property line, so it will, you'd have to take some care, obviously, to ensure that the grading's done properly, not to affect the neighbors. All the lands in the back are all natural. You can see the configuration of this property here. That's all naturalized vegetation.
So perhaps, sir, when you have your building design worked out, you can come and sit with the staff, and between engineering and the building department, they'll be able to advise you what precautions you must take before you commence construction and sensitivity you should have, obviously, with respect to the natural drainage and the proper drainage for your property.
Is there any way that I can be involved? I mean, I'm not going to hold back what needs to be done and such, but to be involved in the planning process of what changes are being proposed here? For example, I haven't seen what is actually being proposed, and how, you know, and I know they talked about armor stone and building it up and whatnot. Is there any way that I can be involved in that process as they work through with the engineering reports as to what changes need to happen, knowing that it's going to impact my property, which is also tied into the EPA area, and I ideally would like to not touch the EPA area on my property?
Perhaps we can answer that for you. Council can introduce a, probably, condition in the motion to allow your input. Is that correct, Mr. Beaman?
Well, actually, Mr. Mayor, I'm wondering if council might consider, again, a deferral here, because this man's rights are being affected directly by the zoning bylaw. His own property is being rezoned here. It's clear that he has some concerns about the effect that will have on his rights. He's more like.
Okay, thank you. Yes, pleasure of council. I guess I'm just getting advice from the clerk that we should probably close the meeting, and then we can deal with the matter of deferral, but I think we should probably hear the applicant as well, and we'll get to that point, sir. So I'll ask the questions. Is anybody else other than the applicant who wishes to speak to the matter? Having seen none. Okay, members of council, you have any further questions? Yes, Counsel Ryanone?
I don't understand, are we going to hear the applicant, then defer, then hear the applicant again?
I think the clerk, would you give us your advice, then, please?
I'm confused, Dean, if we're.
Well, I'm just saying, you've opened the public planning meeting, you know, and you're only going to have to hear from one other person. A lot of times when we have a deferral motion, the reason why we don't go ahead with the public meeting is because there's usually twenty or thirty people that want to speak, and, you know, we're going to have to hear them again when the matter comes back. I think under these circumstances, hear from the applicant, close the meeting, and then make a decision whether you want to defer or not.
Okay, is that clear for everybody? So at this time, I'm going to ask the applicant to come forward, please. Sir, would you come forward, identify yourself?
Good evening, my, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Fais Rayan, I'm professor at Brock University. I'm the first, actually, we are the first out to start building in that area, goes back about four years ago, and actually, the area has been disturbed before we, you know, when they created the subdivision, and that's created the problem. The area is sandy area, it's powder, it's sand, it used to be sand, it, you know, that's the issue. And why we bought that property, actually, it's because of the EPA area, you know, and because of the trees, and we try, you know, not actually destroy trees, we add, I added close to about fifteen thousand, you know, sixteen thousand's worth of trees, as, you know, Mr. Bob, you know, saw that. The problem we face that after we build the house is that there is a great deal of erosion, to the point that there is holes about seven, eight feet, you know, deep, and that's constituted. Actually, one time, my daughter, you know, during the winter, you know, stuck there, you know, at the bottom, and we put sod first time, it doesn't work, so we tried to protect the shoulder, we figured that we have to lift up to change the slope a little bit, because the water, actually, as you can see from the left side of this picture, you know, every neighbor's, from the top, from Rock Cliff, you know, from north, from south, all the water had come to this area, and it would cut steep holes. There is nothing to hold the water there, so we have to get, you know, some a little bit, not sandy, but like, or not, topsoil, and we lift it, we grade it, in order basically to avoid or to prevent erosion. With regard to the law, four years ago, when we put the lot, there is a package, and I noticed that there is difference between the city, you know, bylaws and the EPA, you know, bylaws. When we read the bylaws of the EPA and their restriction, it is allowed for the owner, you know, to, you know, to make changes to this EPA area, as long, I mean, in order to prevent erosion, and I'm quoting, "in order to prevent erosion." And I add also, in their bylaw, if you are forced, you know, for purpose of building, protecting the area, to change the trees, you have to replace it with the same vegetation, and that's their bylaw about four years, I think, ago. And this is what we did, actually. Now, I don't know how, do you mind if you change the picture, go back a little bit?
It's just my shortcut.
You know, if you go back to see the house, and it'll give you an idea about to what extent, you know, we goes, see here, that area, actually, to the left side, you don't see it, we have to put, you know, a lot of armor stone, and that is, you know, it cost us over twenty thousand dollar just to the left side, armor stone, to stop, you know, to stop the erosion there. We do cut trees, you see what we did, you know, the trees are there, we try to protect it, and if you look back to the house. You know, the trees are there, we try to protect it, and if you look back to the house, these, you know, blue spruce trees, you know, this, we move it from outside, we put it there, there is, we add a massive amount of trees. Now, we have a problem, because we are the first owner of this lot, when we bought, when we bought the lot, we, you know, we have restriction that individuals or the owner supposed to build within twenty-four months. It is the fifth year now for us, and you can see the lots is being sold, that is not built. Everybody, you know, I warn you, but there is, Mr. Peter is the fourth owner, and each one of those owners come with different menu to us, you know, about what they like to see and what they like to do. And we try to make arrangement with them, but they are gone, and everybody tried to flip, you know, flip, you know, these lots and make money from it. But again, we try to protect the area, we figure, you know, we don't know when they're gonna build, so we put stone on the left side, and we put stone also on the other side. And Mr. Bob, you know, he came and give you an idea. Actually, it's in one of the beautiful areas, you know, in Niagara Falls, if you visit that. Now, this is the ugly part, because it's winter, and, you know, the planning and zoning ask us to stop, you know, doing anything, otherwise, you know, the engineering, the people, professional, they told us, you know, to put some shrub, and that's what we plan to do. We try to protect the area there. We add the trees, we, in fact, you know, we, we try even not to stub on some of the plant. We have a nice trillium and fern, and we try to keep the area very nice. That's, my neighbor has very small area, you know, and it just, I think about, maybe about ten feet, fifteen feet, you know, on the corner, if you, if you don't mind, would like to see the hash, hash area. That's there, you see that, that triangle? That's the small piece, you know? And we try, you know, to stay away from, from that area. Now, we have a problem that three, not only his lot, but most of the lots, from his lot going up and coming down, that these lots facing a problem that require engineering fill, it's not there, so the owner, they think, oh, gosh, you know, you are too, too high, but actually, Mr. Bob saw they are, they are too low. We try to protect the area, we are not, we are environmentally conscious about the trees, about the environments, and about the beauty there, and trust me, we don't try to destroy things, you know? Thank you very much, you know?
Thank you, sir. Are there any further questions of members of council of the applicant? Okay, thank you very much, sir. And to the neighbor, sir, is there any further questions that you'd like to ask of the applicant? No, okay. So at this time, I'm going to conclude the public meeting with respect to the proposed zoning bylaw amendment, and we'll ask for the pleasure of council. Counsel Thompson?
Yeah, I would move that the staff coordinate meetings with the gentleman involved, and also Mr. Yerich and anybody else in the area who might be generally affected, and come back with a plan that is going to be supported by the individuals and, and that council can deal with directly.
The matter be deferred, counsel?
Yes.
Okay, is there a second to that? Counsel Wing? All right, there's no discussion? All those in favor? Motion's carried. And thank you. Staff will be in touch, and we'll try to resolve this to your satisfaction, as well as the neighbors. Thank you very much. Members of council, I have some comments this evening. I'd like to begin with offering condolences to our city employee, Mr. Lewis Fenderman, on the recent loss of his father, and to the family of Paul Messing, who was a retired employee of the City of Niagara Falls, who passed away last month. We offer our thoughts and sympathy to their families during this difficult time. In addition, I'd like to express our profound sadness at the terrorist attack in Mumbai, India, on the Mumbai-Habad Jewish Center. Our heartfelt sympathy goes out to those in our Jewish community in Niagara Falls who are working to support their faith community across the globe. I was pleased to attend an local memorial service on Sunday afternoon, and I wish them much strength in their continued efforts. I'd like to also just discuss a matter of homelessness with regard to the issue in Niagara Falls, and this is the time of the year that many young people, or many people, I should say, seek out help and assistance from community organizations to get them through the long, often difficult winter months. The problem with homelessness and the needs of the working poor in our community are very real, and I've heard from staff at organizations like Project Share, the YMCA, the Boys and Girls Club, the Salvation Army, and Out of the Cold, and I'm told that this year there is a greater need for support. They tell me that donations are down, and the number of families that need assistance in our city is up. So I brought representatives from these organizations, along with members of the faith community in Niagara Falls, also regional housing and healthcare professionals, together to discuss our community's housing and support needs for the homeless and the working poor. We've had a couple of meetings now to discuss how to move forward to ensure that the services that people need in our community are being provided, and while avoiding duplication and working toward permanent, sustainable solutions for people that can benefit from a hand-up. I invite members of council who are interested in being involved in the discussion with our community partners to be in touch with me in order to contribute their thoughts to this vital issue that needs to be addressed on an ongoing basis in our city. We've done what we call a working, working capacity of a task force to address community needs, and I'm pleased to announce that already as a group, we're working on several important initiatives. A strategic plan, which will be the document that sets out what services are available and what services we need in our city, is currently being drafted, and this project is being headed up by the United Way, and, again, members of our task force. In addition, the Niagara Falls Review has generously donated space to print a Who Needs Donations column, which will outline each organization's immediate needs for donations for the holiday season. And please, if you'd be able to keep your eyes on this column, I'd appreciate, and you can see how, you can find out how you can help those in need of our community this year. So this is gonna be published, I think, on a weekly basis. It'll be outlining who does what, who has what available, if people need certain clothing, if they need shelter, whatever, and likewise, if people are interested in dedicating or donating to the causes of each of those organizations, they'll be aware of what their needs are. So I'll certainly be in touch with council on further updates as we make progress. As well, I wanted to move on to inform residents of some of our recent notable events that have taken place in our community. This past Saturday, I was very happy to have been part of the Santa Claus Parade. I'd like to thank, again, Parks, Recreation, and Culture staff, along with the staff and other departments and community team volunteers for their wonderful efforts to put this year's parade together. It was a great pleasure to see the excellent parade entries and the thrilling Christmas spirit downtown. Thank you as well to the students at all the high schools for their exuberant entries in this year's Santa Claus Parade. On Friday, it was a pleasure as well to join residents and staff at Cavendish Manor for their official reopening after the fire that took place in May. It was great to see that no detail of residents' comfort was overlooked in the renovation effort. Congratulations to all those involved at Cavendish Manor. And coming up, we have some important events taking place that I'd like to share with all of you, including the Winter Festival of Lights Golden Griddle Community Pancake Breakfast, and this is a free breakfast that will be held at St. Patrick's Church Hall this Saturday, December 6th, from 10 until 12:00. All are invited, and donations to Project Share would be kindly accepted. Another free event coming up in our community is the Angels Everywhere, and this year it's taking place at the Christ Church on Thursday, December 11th, between 7:00 and 9:00 p.m. There will be presentations of dancing, art, choirs, and other music, and it will be a true Christmas celebration. All are welcome to attend this event, and the proceeds of which will also go to Project Share. On Saturday, December 13th, marks the date of this year's downtown candlelight stroll. We will be lighting a reflection tree in Centennial Square immediately before the walking tours that will take place. festivities begin at 6:00 p.m. on Saturday, the 13th. I look forward to seeing many of you at these upcoming community events, and thank you for your time this evening. Move on to the next item on the agenda. Members of council, we have communications and comments from the city clerk. At this point, item number one is the Mayor's Youth Advisory Committee requesting a 25-cent student bus ride during the school Christmas break between December 20th and January 4th, and also March break, March 14th to 22nd. Moved by Counsel Thompson, seconded by Counsel Ryanone. All those in favor? Motion's carried, thank you. The next item is Bullying Canada, which is .ca, then Blue Day, requesting that December 17, 2008 be declared as Blue Day in the City of Niagara Falls. Moved by Counsel Kerrio, seconded by Counsel Maves. Once again, you've heard the question, any comments? Having seen none, all those in favor? All of them in favor? Motion's carried, sorry. Yes?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Counsel Peter Angelo, is there something I missed?
Bullying.
Oh, yes, I see, sorry. I'm sorry, it went over my head, thank you. Additional items for council's consideration, Mr. Clerk?
Did you vote on the next second?
Yes, we did, it was carried, thank you.
Too busy laughing. Yes, there are two additional communications. These are sort of annual communications, and we just got a little late ones for the downtown BIA for the free on-street parking during December, and the other one's actually for the formal approval for the New Year's Eve fireworks. We do, we did the Winter Festival of Lights one already, but this one's separate, but these are annual.
Move both of the parts.
Counsel Thompson, moved by both items, and seconded by Counsel Fisher. Again, members of council, any questions or comments? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion's carried, Danas, thank you very much. Ratification of the Community Services Committee action. I'm gonna call on the Chair, Counsel Ryanone, to bring forward those matters, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The following items are to be ratified from tonight's meeting of the Community Services Committee. The minutes of November 3rd, 2008 meeting be approved under reports. PD 2008-107, information report, South Niagara Falls watershed plan, that the committee receive this report for information. BBS 2008-05, signed by law variance request, Mountain View Homes, Thundering Waters Village, that a variance for a 300-square-foot V-board sign be granted for five years. Our 2008-36, arena payment and cancellation policy. One, that council approve the new arena payment and cancellation policy. Two, that the new arena payment and cancellation policy become effective for the new arena ice season, which commences January 1st, 2009, and that staff coordinate an information meeting with arena users, user groups, and clients on the new arena payment and cancellation policy. Under TS 2008-51, Eastwood Crescent traffic operations review. One, that a no-heavy vehicle restriction, including up to $5,000 fine and no buses tabs, be implemented on Crestwood, Eastwood Crescent between Victoria Avenue and Palmer Avenue. Two, that no heavy vehicle restriction, including up to $5,000 fine and no buses tabs, be implemented on the entire length of Ryerson Crescent. That a stop sign be installed facing southbound Motorsome Wesley Place at Eastwood Crescent. That a no-stopping restriction be installed on the south side of Eastwood Crescent between Victoria Avenue and a .30 meters east of Victoria Avenue, and that buses be restricted from the metered parking spaces on the east side of Victoria Avenue between King Kate Place and Robert Street. That staff review the traffic operations over the next six months and bring back a report to, to the committee. TS 2008-61, raise auto sales information report, that a second access from First Avenue be granted, and the daylight triangle be reconvened to the owner of the abutting property. Three, under new business, that parking enforcement along the east side of Main Street from Robinson Point to a point fif, 155 meters west of Allendale Avenue be suspended immediately, and that staff bring back a report to the committee. That staff investigate alternatives for loose-leaf pickup and in-camera session. Motion to move in camera by Counsel Maves, seconded by Counsel Diodati, and I so move.
Moved by Counsel Ryanone, seconded by Counsel Diodati. Any comments or questions? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion's carried. I'd like to nail Kamal Pon, the Chair of Corporate Services Committee Action, Mr. Counsel Peter Angelo, to present Corporate Services Committee actions.
Thank you, Worship. Following items are to be ratified from tonight's meeting of the Corporate Services. First, that the minutes of November 17, 2008 be adopted as recorded. Under reports, we had F. 2008-48 dealing with the 2008 financial update. It's recommended that the financial update be received, and that the committee recommend additional quarterly and semi-annual financial reporting. Second item, that staff report back on the cost of conducting a forensic audit of the corporation. And third, that letters be sent to the organizations requesting permissive grants notifying that there are no guarantee that they will receive their full funding requests. Under new business, Your Worship, we have one item, that staff investigate opportunities to sell surplus water derived from city maintenance and flushing of fire hydrants, and I would so move the minutes.
Moved by Counsel Peter Angelo, seconded by Counsel Diodati. Once again, any questions or comments? Having seen none, all those in favor? The motion's carried, thank you. Move on to the consent agenda. Members of council, your pleasure. Counsel Kerrio?
Your Worship, on the first item, council schedule, I have a suggestion that we move January, meeting on January 12th. I see we have a one-hour meeting, a capital budget workshop, that we amalgamate that with the 19th meeting, and instead of having that meeting...
Sorry?
I'm suggesting that we...
Yes?
Have the capital budget workshop on the 19th instead of the 12th.
So we begin that earlier?
That's what I suggest, and most of the members of council, I think, would agree that rather than come here for one hour, we make the other meeting a little bit longer.
Okay. Counsel Peter Angelo, you have a comment with respect to that?
I was gonna ask if you were involved in the meeting, if you could call the false number.
Okay, so we have a motion before us, there's a second to the motion. Counsel Peter Angelo, once again, anybody wanna speak for the matter? Having seen none, we'll call the vote. All those in favor? Motion's carried, thank you. So that'll be then, the meeting will begin earlier at 5:00 p.m., is that correct?
Four.
4:00 p.m., 4:00 p.m., sorry? Thank you. Any other changes requested? Counsel Peter Angelo?
Just for clarification, because the 19th meeting was starting at 6:00, and the 12th was a one-hour meeting, is that why you were suggesting that it starts at 5:00?
Yes, I think that's the intent. The one hour, the one hour...
Twelve suggested.
Right.
Live on the 12th.
Four to five on the 12th, move to the 19th.
19? Five on the 19th?
So then five at the whole.
That's right, just to qualify. The clerk wants to make a comment as well?
Sure.
Times are approximate, they're not accurate. So the meeting on the 12th wasn't necessarily gonna take an hour, or a half an hour, or two hours. The reason why the meeting was indicated, the budget workshop meeting was indicated on the 12th was because you actually approved it in September, when you approved the 2009 budget schedule, but we can obviously move that to the 19th. And like I said, don't put too much stock in those times, you know, it could be four to six or whatever, but we will accommodate both of those meetings on the 19th, that's not an issue.
Okay, so we've achieved that, okay? Anything else on the consent agenda, sorry? Yes, Counsel? Okay, so move the balance of the agenda by Counsel Diodati, seconded by Counsel Peter Angelo. Any further comments or questions? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion's carried, thank you. We have some resolutions, members of council, that, first of all, a request for the funding under the Niagara Region Public Domain Incentives Program for Stormville. Moved by Counsel Wing, seconded by Counsel Thompson. Any comments or questions? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion's carried. Next item is the TS 2008-66, QEW Mountain Road to Highway 420 Environmental Assessment. Again, a resolution. Moved by Counsel Peter Angelo, seconded by Counsel Maves. Any comments or questions? Having seen none, all those in favor? The motion's carried. Move on to bylaws. Mr. Clerk, are there any additional bylaws for the council's consideration this evening?
I know, Your Worship.
Okay, then, can I have a motion to introduce the bylaws? Bylaws to give in a first reading, moved by Counsel Peter Angelo, seconded by Counsel Diodati. Once again, council's heard the motion, any questions or comments? Having seen none, all those in favor? The motion's carried.
Bylaws 2008-202 to 2008-215, we're at a first time.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to give the bylaws a second and third reading? Moved by Counsel Peter Angelo, seconded by Counsel Diodati. Once again, council's heard the motion. Any further questions or comments? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion's carried.
Bylaws 2008-202 to 2008-215, we're at a second and third time, and passed.
Thank you. Any new business this evening? Counsel Fisher?
Thank you. As you realize, tonight, I'm wearing a special T-shirt, given to me by the Chippewa Volunteer Fire Department to wear tonight, to let you know that they did take the original fire[1681.65]